Yep, fast on this show, we'll be on time.
Just teasing.
Is everybody here? Okay. And I'm not even on the right page, and that makes for bad. Oh, that's okay. Something.
You are some good something.
Alrighty. I'm calling this meeting to order, a minute late, sorry. And the first thing we need is Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lucy, will you do the roll call for us, please? Ginger Shane, here. Deanna Swires, Sarah Jane, here. Frankie Schwartz, here. Jeff Snyder, here. Rich Barton, here. And Carolyn Sprems, yeah. We have a core. Very good, thank you. I would entertain a motion to amend or adopt the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Carolyn, motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Alrighty, four norms, I would call your attention to those quickly. Helps us keep the meeting on track. And then I believe we are ready for recognitions.
Yes, so our first group of recognitions are our first team, all-state individuals. And congratulations to them, this is the highest honor a student athlete can receive. And so we have, we have two for softball team, which is awesome. So we've got with us Kylie Woodhouse and Kira Daniel. And if you guys want to come up, we'll get a picture with you, and we appreciate that. Then we'll go to choir next.
Carolyn, get in the middle. Congratulations ladies, thanks for representing us so well.
Absolutely super proud of you guys and all you've accomplished. You know, it takes tons of hours of practice and parents getting into the practices and all the time when they're little, growing up, developing them. So congratulations to everyone involved, that's just a tremendous honor. And then choir, we have Becca Spencer with us for all-state choir. And that's not one we have very often either. So congratulations Becca, and come on up and we'll recognize you.
After she does a solo.
And I tell you, this is just great to have so many of these to recognize, it's just wonderful. And so we're also recognizing our individual athletes who earned a medal at state. This is another big accomplishment for an individual athlete. So Phillip Cackley, all-state medalist across country is, and I believe you break some records Phillip. Yeah, so I think a record holder.
And I think he broke his own record.
Own record. Just amazing feat, so I'm really, really proud of you, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And thank you all for all your hard work and dedication to your craft, to become the highest level possible, you know, superintendent. And the board is just extremely proud of all you have accomplished. Thank you for representing Warren County R3 so well. So you guys are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. But you should probably go, you're welcome to go as well, so.
Thanks for being here, it's awesome.
Thanks for coming. Lucy, do we have any public comments tonight? Okay, thank you. So we are ready for superintendent reports, I believe?
Yes, so we have our lead nurse Holly Ferber here to do our first student health services presentation.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good. I'm Holly Ferber, lead nurse for the Warren County School District. This is my 11th year with the district, I think sixth year as lead nurse, kind of lost track along the way. So as you know, we have lots of students that visit us each year. And so I was looking at this tonight after I had printed it all out again. And we've had 14,029 school visits to the nurse between all of our schools from the beginning, first day of school on August 22nd until November 30th. So, the nurse's office is utilized quite a bit. We have six nurses working for the district, we have a new nurse this year, Breiling Carr. She is a former graduate of Warren County High School, and she is at the high school this year. And then, as you can see, Dean Nobun, they've had an increase in visits from last year at this time. About 360 or so visits. And we're just seeing more students that are sicker, or are taking more medicines, or are coming to the nurse for different things. So, pretty much all of our schools have seen an increase. Rebecca Boon has seen a little bit. She really tries to keep her kids in classes as much as possible, and does a good job of that. And then Rory O'Ridge has seen a little bit of a decrease actually, which is, which is good. The nurses has put in some requirements to come to the nurse's office, you know, so you're not coming out of class all the time to see the nurse. And that has helped greatly. And then the middle school is a little bit more concerning because they have seen almost 4,000 visits just in those couple of months. I know we have some diabetics at the school, but she said those are not the majority of our visits like they were previously. So we have just a lot of students coming in and utilizing the nurse's office, whether it's to try and get out of class and go home, or that are really sick. So, and I think she's used a lot as mental health guidance too on those kids with anxiety and different things like that. But yesterday she had a kid that came in with 107 temperature because they stuck their head in front of the hair dryer.
Oh!
So, she goes, "I'm not, I'm not that dumb." I said, "Well, we'd be calling an ambulance if we were going to that high."
That would be a little startling anyway.
So the ginger ain't getting out of class for different things. So I thought that was very funny. She sent me a picture of the temperature thermometer, and I was like, "107?" So that's always entertaining when we get those. And the high school, they have, the high school has seen an increase in students also. They have a new nurse, so sometimes they can't get away with as much with, you know, with previous nurses. And the new nurse they're going to try and get away with coming in to see them more often. But she does have some more higher health kits that she didn't have before. So, kind of move those up through the ranks and they require a little bit more care. Early childhood is about the same. I don't see a lot of kids. But I am used, utilized in other ways there, so. And then Care Day, we see almost 11 students a day when we're there. So it's not super busy, but we do have some kids that have severe allergies that are there. So we are very cognizant of what's going on, and Dr. Stanek does a good job of, hey, we're having this activity today, or this food, you know, is this safe or not safe? So there's really a good partnership with her in finding those things out for those kids that aren't normally in that school, so. Daily medications, so it's interesting that Black Hawk's numbers almost doubled in daily medications from last year. They had about 17 a day last year, and now we're at 32. So that is a little bit concerning to me as a nurse that we have so many kids that are out of medications. But glad that they're utilizing the nurse's office to take those and hopefully help them succeed better in school. And then our special care needs. Our numbers really dropped this year compared to last year's numbers that we, and these are numbers that we submit to the state, and specific things that the state asks for on their report. And I think that the reason why our numbers went down so much is because we have Infinite Campus was new. The medical information that we have before, not much of it transferred over from CIST to Infinite Campus. And then the choices that you can make for healthcare problems are much more specific than they were previously. They go along with ICD-9 codes, so they're very specific. So I don't know if parents didn't know how to find those. So there's a lot of things that we have found along the way, or we already knew that these kids had things, and we've added things in ourselves. But I think a lot of that has kind of slipped through the cracks with changing our charting systems, so. And then, and learning Infinite Campus was quite a hurdle for the nurses. Our training wasn't the greatest, but we've kind of plowed our way through and have gotten it figured out. And I do think it's much more, it's not quite as user-friendly, but for reports and different things like that, it is much more in-depth and easier to use than CIST was. So we can look at things a different way using their reporting systems that they have. Do you guys have any questions for me?
This is a pat on the back, not a question. I just, I heard this conversation a couple of days ago. One of our parents was remarking that she had called the nurse at her child's school because she had some concerns about how many days her child had missed school, had some health problems, was wondering if maybe the nurse was seeing a lot of those similar symptoms in other kids. And she was trying to decide whether to take her to a doctor or not, you know? And this other person said, "You called who?" And she said, "I called the nurse at my child's school." And she said, "My child, my child don't go to, my children don't go to school here, but if I tried to call the nurse, they would go, 'Why do you need to talk to the nurse?'" Or the nurse would say, "Why are you calling me?" Like she didn't think she would get any information, or her call wouldn't be well received. And I was like, "Oh, I'm glad that we can't say that, you know, our nurses are responsive to the parents when they call and..."
And we call back right away if we can.
Yes, yes.
I mean, I get emails in the middle, you know, like I was off on Friday and I had an email from a parent, and I was emailing him back and forth so that they could get the answers and the things they needed to get their student in school because they've been missing some things on enrollment. So, but yeah, they're all pretty responsive as they can be compared to how many visits they have and in between all those kids they're seeing.
I was just proud to hear, you know, that our, that I think that's the expectation that you have for your staff and stuff, but
Yes.
I was proud because we were like, "Well, yes, she could call the nurse," you know?
Yes, we welcome questions, we like questions, you know, or to tell us some, an update on your student. So then when they come in, we're not calling you because we already know.
Right, right.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Candidate filing update.
Yeah, just to give the Board of Education, candidate filing's been open now for, I guess a little bit more than a week. And we've had two candidates file, Jeff Snyder and Deanna Swires. Thank you both for signing back up. Pay stays the same, just a real clear, zero dollars a year. Thank you for your commitment to the school district. But other people are welcome to file still. Board of Education candidate filing closes on December 26th at 5:00.
And then we're ready for the financial update.
Alright, just our normal monthly report here. Revenues are a little behind where we were last year. According to budget, of course, the board of the budget this year is based on our funds from local taxes. So in next month, we should start to see that catch up, I would think. Expenses are a little bit ahead as well. Of course, last year we built the building, that impacted that, but we are ahead on fund balances on both those situations. As you can kind of see, our chart of fund balances here, we're trending as expected. Still slightly ahead, pretty close to what we were doing last year. So there's that. Revenues, local revenues are up, a lot of that is Prop C, which is our, the state half-cent tax that goes to all schools. People are still spending money, so this is a way for us, also inflation plays into that. So our local funds are definitely up for that. And then also, we're getting better return on our investments. We've got more money in the bank and rates are up than they were this time last year. So those are the two biggest factors for the local funds being almost $700,000 compared to where they were last year at this time. So that's positive. Everything else is pretty much the same, except federal, we're behind on that. There's our three payments last year that we received, we obviously aren't receiving those this year, so that's going to be a lot, lot less this year. So total dollars, we're actually receiving less money than we did last year. Expense-wise, salaries are up as expected, you know, we did give raises. Benefits are up as well. Purchase services continue to be, well, they're a little bit lower than last year, but about the same. And then supplies are up just because of curriculum purchases and things like that that happened over the summer. So they'll probably remain higher than last year, just as budgeted. So no, no major concerns, everything seems to be on track. And then the capital projects, we're right at 1.7. Right now, now we will see that come down, because we have the roofing project that's happening, the high school is, you know, 300,000. So that'll come out of that account, but that's where our cash flow is right now. So we're doing things going pretty good.
Anyone have questions? If not, we'll move ahead to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Thank you Jeff for seconding that. Does anyone have any questions about anything on the consent agenda before we vote? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the consent agenda is passed. And we have no old business. New business, we did not receive the audit.
Yeah, that's right, they're, they're onsite, there are no issues, it's just a matter of them getting the audit written up and to us, and it didn't happen, so.
But they didn't have any findings, or anything.
Not that I'm aware of at this point, they would have told me, I would imagine, but, but we have not received the official audit. Everything seems to be on fine, it's just a matter of them writing it and getting it to us. So we have to have this approved by January 31st. We think we're going to have it Wednesday maybe, so I don't know if we want to try to do a virtual special meeting or something like that to just approve the audit? Or how do we want to handle, handle that? In-person, virtual, however you want to do it, doesn't matter.
So we have until January 31st?
No, the 31st of this month.
Oh, you said January.
Oh, did I?
I was like, "Why can't we just do it in the January?"
I must have said January 1st.
Okay.
So we've got to have it done.
Like January 1st, okay. So how's everybody feel? I mean, we can do virtual, right, and do it pretty quickly.
It can be during the day if it's easier, or...
I don't know if everybody is okay with it during the day. It's going to be, yeah, it's going to be brief, so, okay? So you're thinking you might have it Wednesday?
Yeah, I think Wednesday afternoon should be, should have, we can do it on Thursday if you feel more comfortable with that.
If you could maybe send us an email Wednesday, if you get it Wednesday, let us know.
Well, we've got to post the meeting for 24 hours prior, so we don't want to be in violation of sunshine law, so. If we want to post it on, do it on Thursday, we can just have posted it.
We could go ahead and set a time for it now, and then if something happens that you don't get it, we'll have to reboot, do something different, but...
Is there a time Thursday that you would, is better?
And what about those of you who will be at work Thursday, next week, right?
Thursday of next week, correct? So do you, 21st?
Yeah, in the morning. In the morning, okay. Like 8:00, 7:30, what do you want to do? 7:30, you're dropping kids off probably. Oh, there's no school on Thursday, we're, okay, never mind.
I'm hiding for my children to have a quiet meeting. Running is the best.
You'll be driving, when will you be not driving?
2:30 after 8:00.
Okay, so.
8:30?
8:30, is that okay? Alright, okay.
8:30, 8:30. Great.
Okay.
Meet you in the club.
Athletic plan. And is this, everyone doing this virtual, I guess? Is anybody want to come into the office?
I can do it virtually.
Okay.
I actually...
I'll send you a link, yeah.
I actually have real internet at my house, I don't have to go anywhere else.
That's awesome, I am jealous.
Okay. Alright, so we'll take care of that next Thursday, hopefully, hopefully you'll have it by then.
Yeah, we should, yes, they're telling us.
Alright, thanks everybody for figuring that out. Next are the course guides.
Yes, so we have the course guides here. The new courses are listed, there we have our, first class listed is Leadership Development. This actually came out of our meetings with the students. They wanted to do more leadership development and promote the school in a spirit, kind of school spirit way. So promoting students and, you know, just making sure everyone's communicated with well on when events are games. So maybe we could get more student involvement at games. I thought it was a great idea, so that's been added. The next one is Intro to the Bible. This is a course that was approved by the legislative session, last session approved and last session, that school districts could offer it. And we thought we would offer it to see what kind of interest we have, and to see where it goes. So we're allowed to offer this during the law changes, and so we're just offering the course to see how it goes.
And that's to be taught as a literature course?
Oh, it's, the law says a social studies elective course.
A social studies.
So it'll just be an elective class, no one's forced to take this class in any way. It's just 100% elective, so that's how that would go. Then we're working on registered youth apprenticeships to get more students involved in our community. That's still kind of work in progress, but that'll go hand in hand with our dual credit expansions. And we're hoping to have a cohort of students going through dual credit, and having an individual help navigate them, a teacher help navigate them through those courses. And then the next thing we had was Algebra 1M, which we're trying to give them their option for algebra, because algebra is our most critical piece there. So it'd be a modified algebra course for some students that might need that. And then the last piece there is French. We just not had the demand for a full French teacher course, and we struggle to find a teacher. And so kids can still take French, we're just not going to have a standalone program with course guide. They can do it virtually if they'd like, just like any other language like German or things like that that we don't offer. But Spanish has just been such a high demand, that's taken really all our resources for that, so. Those are kind of the changes to the high school course guide. And then the middle school, we're adding two additional courses, recommend to add two additional courses of Career Education, 6th and 8th grade. We already have Career Education, 7th grade, this will just book it then.
Will the Career Education in 7th grade be revamped to have a flow from 6th through 8th grade then, or what are you looking at?
We're probably match up 6th and 8th grade what 7th grade is doing. So try to have a continuum there. 8th grade will probably focusing more on their I-CAP that they all are required to do to begin the year. So I can see that being a part of that more so than, than using Missouri Connections, which is what we use in 7th grade. 6th grade will probably be a lot of Missouri Connections, but then 7th grade will also be more of a Missouri Connections. And then the 8th grade course will most likely be I-CAP focused with some Missouri Connections as well.
I can't remember, is the Career Education semester, or is it a year?
It'd be a quarter, it'd be a quarter. So the way the quarter classes would work, we want to make sure we have enough minutes for PE. We're a little bit short right now, so we've got to get that corrected. And so you have to have 3,000 minutes of PE per semester, 150 minutes of health, which is so you'd have a semester of PE courses, you'd have a quarter of health courses, and the other quarter of that would be Career Education. So that's what the student schedule would look like. Now, they would rotate each quarter, so first, first quarter might be PE and last quarter might be PE, but, but they would have two quarters of PE throughout the year.
I was thrilled when I looked through the course guides for the high school too. I was really proud of how a student really could figure out, okay, if I'm interested in this, this is what my four years look like. And so I really think it's an awesome resource, even for our community to be more aware of what our school is providing to our students for free. Now, there's a few courses that have some cost.
Right, some additional fees, right.
But...
And we do work with students if there are issues with paying for those, we try to help. We don't want any barriers for kids to take the classes.
But as I was preparing for the meeting, I had a family member over, and I was just listening to the things that students had available to them. And they, my family member was shocked that this was provided locally. I'm not even talking Fort River, so, I mean, in our school, all the opportunities that kids have. I was just thrilled to be able to talk about it.
I'll make a motion to approve the 24, 25 course guides as presented.
Thank you, Rich, is there a second? Thank you, there's been a motion, a second to approve the course guides as presented for next year. Does anyone have any further comments or questions?
I just wondered if you could just tell us a little bit about the process since we're changing from the seven-period day to the eight-period day. Can you tell us a little bit about the thought process and what you hope to accomplish with that?
Sure, at the middle school level, to get all the minutes in for PE, we needed to have some change in the schedule. And so, and that's, the state board has put that out as something that we need to be doing. So we want to follow all the rules that are out there. So we're, to make that happen, we needed to adjust the schedule. And the main goal of that was not to limit the number of elective students could have opportunities to. So we did, we couldn't have gone, kept it the same, but then that, we could have kept it a seven-period day, but we would've lost a semester of potential elective opportunities for kids. And that was really something we don't, didn't want to do. So moving to an eight-period schedule allows us to maintain the same number of elective opportunities for kids, plus add the career courses, which is something I've been hearing a lot about in our community, things we need to have. So the idea was maintain as many elective opportunities as students, because middle school is really where they're exploring all of those things. And then, then they're fine-tuning kind of where they want to go to in high school, and what they really want to really study in depth. And so, so that was kind of one of the main focuses on that. And so, really only way to do that would go to eight periods instead of seven, to make the minutes work.
And then tell us a little bit about the advisory that's going to be included in the day also, or...
Yes, that's where the middle school's landed, that's been kind of a middle school building level decision if they want to keep that or not. You know, that's part of their house system, where they have a lot of their community building for the, for the building. And so there's enough minutes to have the advisory and all the other things that they want to do. So that's been a building level decision if they would like to keep that or not, and I believe they've settled on keeping that.
Thank you. Anything else before we go? Okay, there's been a motion, a second to approve the 24, 25 course guides as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next is the bus lease agreement.
Yes, so this is 100% reimbursable through early childhoods, this would be for early childhood buses. And the total cost is $470,000, but this will be those buses through 2028. You can't purchase buses and have it reimbursed, but you can lease buses and have it reimbursed, which makes no sense, but that is the rule. So we like getting reimbursed for things that we can, so this would be at least, so it would be those buses for early childhood through 2028. it would be those buses for early childhood through 2028.
I'll move to approve the bus lease agreement as presented.
Thank you, Jeff. I'll second it. Thank you, Deanna. There's a motion, a second, to approve the bus lease agreement as presented. Does anyone have any questions? Is there any discussion?
How many buses?
Oh, that was a five? I think that...
Yeah, I think it was a low one.
Yeah. I had that, I had that, don't want to tell you wrong, but I think it was, I think it was five. Stop right here. Do you have a... Oh, I think it was three. Oh. Yep, it was just three, sorry, three.
Will they, is that all they need or will they still be utilizing some of the buses that we have?
We'll still be using some of the ones we have as well, but that'll be enough to cover us for what our needs are.
If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is geotechnical test borings and surveying of district property.
Right, this would be our property up north that we, that we own, that we hope to build a school on, and we just like to do some surveying and boring to make sure we know what we have, that we're working with. There's oil or something or a big chunk of limestone, it's the only one in all of Warren County. So, we just want to make sure that that's, that it is clay like we think it is going to be. So, we got some good bids on that, and so we'd recommend Cochran for the land survey and then SCI for the geo-test borings.
I make a motion to approve Cochran Engineering to provide the land survey and SCI Engineering to provide the geotechnical test borings.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's been a motion, a second, to approve Cochran Engineering to provide the land survey and SCI Engineering to provide the geotechnical test borings. Are there any questions or is there any discussion? Now, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Prop R-three resolution.
Right, so this is our final step to put something on the ballot. So, we've discussed this for months. We finalized our ballot language, we know exactly what we wanted to do. Now, we have to pass a resolution to take the county clerks to file the finalists, so... And please don't leave, Deanna and Frankie, there's a lot of things you have to sign after this.
We have to go back to closed session.
Okay, great, great. So, this is the final resolution, and we will take this to the county clerks tomorrow to get filed, get on the ballot, and just need a motion for you to do that.
I would entertain a motion.
We approve the resolution as presented.
I second.
And Carolyn seconded, thank you. Any, I don't know that we have any discussion because like Greg said, we've been through all of this already and got the language the way we feel it needs to be and with some help from advisors, and so, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the resolution is approved. We have no policy first reads, so we are all the way to miscellaneous. Does anyone have any celebrations to share?
I'd like to give a shout-out to Troy Anderson, joining the Thousand Point Club the other night in a game, I think it was at Union Lane, crossed the Thousand Point Bear. That's, that's tough, dude. You have to play at least probably usually three years at the Marshall level to accomplish that, and he's put a lot of hard work into that, and so just congratulations to his family and Troy for that and his coaching staff and his teammates, because it takes a lot of passing to get those, and you better be thanking those passers because that's what I did. Congratulations to Troy.
Anybody else?
Well, I'd like to thank the Rosen Family Foundation. They are, the wise meeting on Friday, they gave us a one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar check to use for salaries for an agriculture teacher and supplies for the ag department. It's very, very generous donation. The Rosen Family Foundation is connected with American Foods Group. They're not, it's not American Foods Group, but they're the same group of people, right? So, very, very, very thankful for, for that donation.
That's awesome, dude.
All right. Think we can set the next regular meeting then?
I make a motion to set the next regular board meeting for January eleventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, Carolyn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Your motion's been made to set the next regular board meeting for January eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. How did we get there so quickly? I'm sure, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. All right, we have that meeting set. I would entertain a motion to set the next closed session.
I make a motion to set the next closed Board of Education meeting to immediately proceed the regular board meeting on January eleventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you. Is there a second? Jeff seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye.